Uh, good evening. This is a Town of Dyton Board of Selectmen regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 24th, 2023 at 6:30. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. You can join the Zoom meeting at meeting ID 883-818-5167. The passcode is 418107. And the phone to call in at is 309-205-3325. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact the office at boardofselectmen@dyton-mass.gov to provide input prior to the meeting. Via Zoom call in by phone at 309-205-3325. It's continually played on Dyton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/TownofDyton. This meeting is being recorded. The listening of matters are those recently anticipated by the Chair. They may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed in fact may be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So we're gonna have a call to order first.
Leonard Hull is present?
Nicole Mello present.
And myself, Peter Karen present. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? In right after the Pledge of Allegiance, it's probably over the silence, if we could please say standing.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, one resident of the town of Dyton has passed. Ronald C. Agiau Senior, age 84, passed away peacefully on Thursday, May 11. He was the beloved husband of Blanche Fontaine Agiau for 61 years. Ronald was a heavy equipment operator for many years up until his retirement. Our thoughts and condolences go out to the Agiau family. Could we have a moment of silence?
First thing tonight is all of you here, the office members of Council on Aging, whenever you're ready, Barbara.
I just have a few updates on the annual town meeting coming up I wanted to address. The Council on Aging is providing transportation for the annual town meeting. That'll be on the front page of the Strawberry Vine newsletter, so you can get that hopefully this week if you haven't gotten it already. So it's a handicap accessible bus that we rented. Its reservations are first come and first served. You must reserve the seat by 10:00 a.m. on the meeting day on Monday, June 5. You can call us at 508-823-0095, or you can stop into the office that's located behind the playground. This was in courtesy of the funds that Senator Mark Pacico had gifted to the Dyton Council on Aging in October of last year. We are to use that by the end of June. So we had some extra funding, and we were addressed by some residents that don't like to drive at night, some seniors can't drive at night, so we thought this was a great way to use that. So that's one of the updates I wanted to give the residents. In addition, I wanted to just give a quick update on that walk challenge that we've been doing. We've had 124 participants at Dyton, and that's out of 1,500 in Massachusetts in general, so I feel like that's a pretty great number that we have that registered. Out of those 124 participants, there's been 808 days that people have logged their steps, and in total, it's 12,366 miles that residents in Dyton have logged for their walk challenge. And there is still time to do that. You can go to walkmchallenge.com. You can come to the office behind playground, or you can call us and we can help register you. It gives us a chance to get $1,000 for fitness programming, or you can also win gift cards up to $50. My last update is, we were gifted a pinball machine. It's a four-player, 1975 Williams Pack hand pinball machine. It was donated by David and his son Nathan R. Holby. They collect vintage pinball machines, they fix them up themselves, and they just donate them to different areas, so they thought of us would be very thoughtful. And it's open for free play, you don't have to pay for it. From Monday through Friday, we're open from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and we've had a lot of people come and play already. We got it, I think, two weeks ago now, and it is really cool. And if you guys wanna come and play, we're right behind the playground at Town Hall.
Great.
Those are my updates.
Sure, cool. First thing about the transportation. When the van is full, it's done, or they're going to make another run, can fill the van up again?
It'll likely just be the one, and it's a 24-seater. The pool we got was for one run.
Okay.
They would pick everyone up, wait, and then drop everyone off.
Okay.
So depending on, I asked them for a pool on what it would be for multiple runs, I don't think we have that in our, what we have left for those funds unfortunately to do that, but.
Okay, great. And the numbers for the walk, I'm, uh...
Impressive.
Very impressive.
Very impressive.
For Little Old Dyton.
I know. And I, we somehow, somebody accidentally registered for Springfield, and I will look to see, and they only have four participants in Springfield, which was very shocking to me.
Sure. And congratulations on the pinball machine.
Thanks, yeah. Hopefully you guys can come by and play it. It's actually really nice, we did all the lights to be, uh, LED lights so they don't throw off heat. More, obviously, better for electricity.
Sure.
It's in really good shape. He's already come by and checked on it, just to make sure if there's any, he's right next door, Nathan R. Holby, so he's very passionate about it, he's a great guy.
Do you wanna thank him, or do you want to come from the Board of Selectmen, or...
That would be very special, that'd be great.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Leonard, do you have any comments?
No, I don't, but I, I think when we do the letter, we should inform the motion.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a motion to send a letter of sincere thanks and appreciation to the...
David and Nathan.
Yes, uh...
R. Holby.
Yes, I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded, in discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Peter Karen is in aye.
And I can give you guys his contact information. Thank you.
Nicole, do you have any comments?
No, I'm really excited about the ride thing, that was really great.
Yeah, we had some extra funding, and we thought, you know, people were coming up to us asking, and we thought that's a great way to use it, so hopefully we fill it up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are our announcements. If you're ready.
All right. Bulky item, first slide pickup is scheduled for Monday, 5:22, and this is gonna run through Friday, 5:26. Tags may be purchased at the Board of Health office, 1111 Somerset Ave. Contact the Board of Health to order your tags at 774-872-0943. A separate tag is required for each item to be disposed. Bulky item schedule is the same schedule as trash pickup, and items must be out no later than 7:00 a.m. The 2023 Memorial Day Ceremony will be held at Veterans Memorial Park on Monday, May 29th at 10:00 a.m. The ceremony begins at the Pavilion, located behind Old Town Hall at 1111 Somerset Ave, and will end at Veterans Memorial Park. Please join us to honor all those who have served our country. The Dyton Historical Society presents the Sixth Annual Dyton Strawberry Festival to be held on June 10th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Lions Pavilion. Dyton Town Grounds, once again, 1111 Somerset Ave. There will be pony rides, balloon animals, live music, crafts, and of course, strawberry shortcake. The Town of Dyton Food Bank will be held next on June 17th, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave, that's the lower level. The Town of Dyton plans to fill a vacant member position, the Board of Health. The Board of Health is a three-member board appointed by the Board of Selectmen that is required by state and law to provide policy, guidance, directions to the Board of Health staff and enforce actions as needed related to protection of public and environmental health. All applicants are required to submit a completed Town of Dyton employment application with a resume and cover letter by email, this is to Leanne. Applications will also be accepted by mail or hand delivery to the office of the Board of Selectmen, 979 Somerset Ave, Dyton. Full description of the position can be found on the Town of Dyton website at dyton/mass.gov. Applications will be accepted until 4:30 p.m. on May 26.
Thank you. The next thing up is public input. Before anybody comes up, I just wanna make a couple announcements. And first being that if you have any negative comments about any employee at the Town Hall or who works for the town, please address those to Mike Mullin, the Town Administrator, not here at this public input forum. The second thing is, we're going to limit you to five minutes this evening, which is what we usually do. And third, I'm gonna ask you that you not repeat yourself to make a point. I think everybody here is pressed for time, and a number of people might wanna speak, so just when you're up here, speak the way you need to, but just like I said, don't repeat yourself. Is there anybody who wants to be heard this evening? Okay, maybe you will first.
Jennifer, which has been 2414 County Street, and Dyton, thank you so much for recommending me. I just wanted to talk about what happened with the COD recently and appointments. On the evening of May 4th, 2023, four applicants for the voluntary position of member of the Commission on Disability serving the town of Dyton appeared in person at prime time during the COD's publicly posted and open meeting to interview for the positions. This meeting was recorded and opened to the public for attendance and question asking. Mrs. Nicole Mello was present as a non-voting member of the Commission and liaison to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Leonard Hull was present as a member of the public. Myself, Mr. Kevin Smith, who serves as clerk currently for the COD, and Mr. Jonathan Gale, who is currently the Chair of the COD, interviewed all four candidates. They had provided us with their applications and showed great amount of interest and care in the work that the Commission is charged with. We wholeheartedly passed along our recommendation that all four of these candidates be appointed to the Commission. On May 10th, these recommendations were before the Board of Selectmen for review and appointment. None of the candidates were present to be questioned, and yet the Board appointed two of the four candidates. It may not have been the intent of the Board, but the impact of this action is that of an appearance of bias. This bias is both in the form of nepotism, as expressed by Chairman Peter Karen, who noted for each candidate whether he thought he knew them personally or not, and whether in knowing them, needed them present to question or not. It also presents an appearance of bias as the two applicants appointed were both men, and the two who were not were both women. Again, I emphasize intent versus impact. The Town of Dyton website proudly espouses our town as a small town with a big heart. Those of us who choose to serve the town do so because we care. I truly believe that whether you are running for the Board of Selectmen or volunteering for a commission or committee, we choose to spend our precious time on the things we care about. I believe this is also true for the Board members here tonight. In saying that, I can only surmise that it was not the intent of our Board of Selectmen to make the fine folks who applied to volunteer feel unwelcome in bringing forth their skills, talents, and most especially, giving freely of their time to serve their community. If that was their intent, one might think them uncaring. So if this was not the intent of the Board, we must focus on impact. The impact that resulted is that folks do not feel welcome to volunteer. They feel alienated, and can we blame them? In my experience, there has not been a precedent for having committee members or commission members present at Board of Selectmen meetings to be questioned prior to their appointment. When I was reappointed to the Commission back in February, this was the case for me. I happened to be present because I was attending the meeting anyway that night. I was not questioned and was appointed without delay. I worry that this has now set a precedent of unfriendliness which will serve only to create more barriers to participation and less interest in serving our town. As mentioned explicitly by Selectman Hull in the statement he read into the record on May 10th, and I quote, "The Commission on Disability had four applicants, which they had a choice, they could keep two and reject two, or they could expand their board as the bylaw allowed to four. I advocated with the Commission of Disability for four members to be appointed, especially due to the fact that we have a difficult time getting people to apply, and that we had four applicants and the opportunity to appoint all four." Mr. Hull went on to note that the second reason he was supporting the expansion of the Board was that this group that has applied is a cross-section of this community, politically especially, and with that being said, "I saw the opportunity bringing both sides together, working together for the better of the community." Mr. Hull's sentiments were the exact right attitude to have around volunteers serving our town. We want to bring all sides, all viewpoints together, and work on impactful things. Disability is an issue that affects everyone, regardless of political affiliation or learning or leaning. It affects all ages, and the Commission works specifically to support our neighbors by bringing funding and other opportunities to our town that will improve the quality of life for us all. Of course, it is within the purview of the Board members to ask questions, just as it would be in the purview of any member of the public. I feel confident that if any member of the Board had reached out with questions ahead of time, they would have been answered. Given that both Mrs. Mello and Mr. Hull were present, and in fact, Mrs. Mello did ask some questions herself, that opportunity was also open for Mr. Karen. Mr. Karen could have watched the interviews as they were posted to YouTube prior to the May 10th Board of Selectmen meeting as well. If any questions were still left unaddressed, a simple correspondence to the applicants would have sufficed. Asking volunteers to appear in person for their appointment simply so that they can be questioned poses an undue burden. I would ask the Board to consider carefully how it decides to move forward here. Making it more difficult to become a volunteer for the town will result in less volunteerism, less involvement, and the impact of that on our town would be great. If we truly want to work for the good of the entire town, we should be knocking down barriers to participation. We should be figuring out ways to work together more cohesively, and one thing is certain, we should not be appearing to present bias in the form of nepotism or exclusion based on protected classes such as gender. This would be, this would most certainly result in a negative impact, not only in our rate of volunteerism, but in the willingness of folks to get involved in any initiatives affecting the town. I am confident that if the Board truly did not intend to be unwelcoming or biased in any way, we can rectify the situation by admitting that missteps were made, issuing apologies, and looking for ways to support volunteerism and involvement in the town. I urge the Board to appoint the two remaining candidates without delay, so that not only the work of the Commission can move forward, but we can also begin to heal the hurts that this has caused. The Board can then look strategically at how it might be able to foster more volunteerism and support. Thank you, Mrs. Mello, for attending the interviews and for serving as the COD liaison to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Mr. Hull, for advocating both for the Board expansion and the appointment of all four candidates. And thank you to Mr. Karen for hearing this feedback and taking it under advisement. I know that we can all work together to continue to build up our small town with a big heart.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wish to be heard?
Mr. Gale.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Gale, 22 Waterford Circle in Dyton, and I wanna make it clear, I'm speaking this evening strictly as the chairperson for the Commission on Disability. And I'm not gonna necessarily repeat what you just heard from Jen. I think she did an excellent job explaining the circumstances and the situation. My concern as the Chair specifically is that when we interviewed all four of these applicants, all four of these applicants, as noted already, were people who were presented to us as having a relationship to disability. In the case of one of the two individuals who was not selected as of yet, this particular person is profoundly deaf, and has told me this evening it's okay to share that, and there's a reason I'm saying it that way. The other person, who was not yet selected, also works with disability by taking care of her mother in her, in her home, who also has a disability. Not to mention, the original applicant that I just mentioned, who is profoundly deaf, also works with children specifically who are special needs. For those two reasons alone, not to mention their interest and their other concerns of areas related to disability in our community, they presented as people who are caring, concerned, and want to make a difference for all of our residents who have disability. As noted already, two of the three of you were present, but at the meeting on the 10th, neither of those two individuals, neither of you said during that part of the process, "I was there, I was part of the interview process," they presented. Now, I'm assuming because of the confusion about how everything was going on, and I listened, that there was confusion, but neither of you brought that out. Had you brought that out, that might have made it easier for you to consider those two applicants the same night you considered the two male applicants. It would have been clear that two out of the three of you had already participated in the interview process, and it wouldn't be necessary to have them here before you again. In addition, I don't know, as echoed already, of any other town's policy or procedure that specifically indicates individuals have to be here and present. If that's the case, and it's going to be the case going forward, I don't think anyone has an objection to that. In fact, it may be the possible way to go. However, to do it retroactively, without any conversation or discussion, in this case with me, who is the Chair, to me is highly inappropriate. And I say that because I did receive an email from the Board of Selectmen's office after the interviews, and the interview simply said, "Please send us the name of the candidates who you're recommending to the Board of Selectmen so their names can be placed on the agenda for the meeting." That's what I did. You read that letter, I believe, into the record, Mr. Karen. So we did exactly what was asked of us. I was not asked to present the candidates in person. The candidates did not receive a letter asking to appear in person, nor were we told that candidates would be considered based on whom they know or whom they don't know, or any of those things at all. In addition, my concern is moving forward a little bit, and I wanna be clear about this, as a separate issue, but part of the whole context of this. There's a question mark now, I understand, as to whether or not committees or commissions in town should have more than five members. This isn't the forum to be used as a sampling for discussing that. If that's gonna be town policy and procedure going forward, or if it has to go through bylaw readings and approval of town meeting, that's a discussion for another time. But considering whether the Disability Commission to set a sample or example for other town committees or commissions is not the place to do it retroactively again. Further, you have, last night, both of the applicants had all of their information posted to the town website, including their applications and their information, their addresses, et cetera, et cetera. That's a procedure, to my knowledge, unless any of you can correct me, or the Town Administrator can correct me, has never been done before for applicants applying to be a member of a committee or a commission in our town. So that sets a precedent in itself. Again, as the Chair, I wasn't asked, told, or advised. Further, one of the two applicants, as I noted earlier, has a disability. Now, she self-declared, to some extent, you could argue, by coming before us, talking about her disability, and putting the information on her initial application. However, as a person with a disability herself, and I can tell you for myself as a person with a disability, she also has the legal right to know when she is going to have her information about her disability posted and where it's going to be posted. Now, if somebody could argue it was on YouTube, perhaps, and yes, it was, but if it's going to be posted on a town-wide website, I think it would be appropriate for me as the Chair, or the Chair of any committee or commission, to know that in advance and to be able to advise that person, "Do you want this information out there? Are you okay with this?" We have issues with disclosure in this town already for residents with disability. I deal with that every single day. It's up to the resident how far they wanna disclose, putting it on application, that's submitted to a commission, and then recommended to the Board of Selectmen, which may not always even have the application in front of you, but do have the letters of recommendation already in front of you, is the normal procedure. So I'm concerned about this again setting a precedent. Both of the candidates were planning to be here this evening. Unfortunately, due to circumstances frankly beyond their control, including work that changed suddenly, they, neither of them can be here this evening. Their intent was to be here, was to answer questions, if you had questions for them, and to not get into a back-and-forth with anyone, because that doesn't accomplish anything. This is an opportunity for everyone, because I'm assuming, to some extent, as already noted, we can all agree that there were some faux pas made at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Excuse me, John, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. We can all assume that there were some faux pas made, okay? Whose responsibility, that's debatable, how it occurred, that's debatable. But what I would ask is that even those individuals can't be here, that when they come up for a vote, rather than voting in the negative, or rather than voting to table, that you affirm them, and that if there's policy or procedural change going forward, that's a discussion for another day. These are well-qualified individuals who are caring people and wanna contribute to this community, and this is the best way they can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard?
Kevin Smith Jr., 1147 Center Street. I just wanna briefly echo what Jonathan and Jen both said, but I wanna lead off by saying that I'm in 100% agreement that if a policy or procedure needs to be changed, that we certainly should explore it. I think one of my biggest grievances since I've been involved in town is I've often got met with, "Well, that's how we've always done it," and that certainly doesn't mean that we've always done it right. So if something needs to be explored, I certainly think the town should do so, whether it's at the Board of Selectmen level or down to, you know, different committees and commissions. I also think that we shouldn't make an example of certain individuals that are in the process right now as a part of making that policy change. As far as the Commission on Disability goes, there's a very specific reason why we recommended all four candidates. One, we did have the support of Selectman Hull in doing so, but also, I think one of the most important parts when you're talking about a commission like the Commission on Disability, is you need a diverse group of individuals to make positive changes in that atmosphere. All of us come from different walks of life, we have different professional experience. There's a group of us that are parents of children with disabilities, there's some of us that have disabilities themselves, there's, we have business owners who deal with it on a, you know, customer care level, so there's very specific reasons why we recommend it all four. And I'll even make the note that prior to our interviews, we even, we had one additional applicant, Robert Woods, and we wished he would've stayed on, because it would've just further diversified the Board if we had the opportunity to appoint him as well, if he did not withdraw his application as a... I think the more people you can bring to the table, the easier it is to get the work done. We've referenced on so many occasions how many deficits this town has with the KMA report, and the KMA report only outlines the physical barriers in the town. It doesn't touch policies, procedures, and any type of employment documents or anything like that. So I would just encourage you this evening to strongly consider continuing on and appointing the two additional applicants that you have before you, so that the Commission on Disability can continue to work together and make some improvements for what I feel is like the biggest, one of the biggest groups of disadvantaged people in our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Bill Moore, 1835 Smith Street. Here talking on a personal level, I wasn't gonna, planning on talking tonight, but after hearing the previous speakers, I feel the need to defend our Board of Selectmen and the process. I think this is much ado about nothing. First of all, the appointments that were requested or referred to the Board of Selectmen were not denied. They were tabled. They were tabled specifically for a reason that one of the members of the Board of Selectmen had no knowledge of these people. It wasn't a statement of, "Oh, they're not my friends." It's, "I don't know these people, I'd like to know a bit more, so let's table it," meaning let's consider it for a future meeting, this meeting. In addition to that, I'd like to be clear that all of the Boards and Committees in this town work under the Board of Selectmen. All of the committee appointments in this town are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, not by the committees. If we had, imagine if you would, if we had a situation where committees were allowed to just select from any person they wanted, and they brought them forward to the Board of Selectmen, and it was absolutely necessary the Board of Selectmen has to rubber stamp that, what does that mean? That means we would have unelected committees that would be complete little fiefdoms of their own, with no oversight from the Board of Selectmen. I strongly support the Board of Selectmen's right to pick and choose any person that goes on any committee. I do agree with Mr. Smith that perhaps the rules need to be clarified and changed, that people that want to serve on a committee, I think they should come here, or minimally write a letter or something like that, so that the members of the Board of Selectmen can be aware of who these people are and who they are appointment, who they're appointing and who they stand for, who they stand by. In this particular situation, there was also, there's nasty accusations of nepotism as well as sexism. This has no place here. This is ridiculous. You telling me that the Board of Selectmen has never appointed a woman to appoint anywhere? Have we never appointed somebody from an opposite political party or something else like that? I can say for myself, as a member of the RTC, these two candidates, and I swear, hand on Bible, to God, these two candidates were never spoken of prior to their, their coming to this whole mess with the Board of Selectmen. to their coming to this whole mess with the Board of Selectmen. We never told any Board, as we generally do not, we don't tell Board of Selectmen who they're going to pick and who they're not going to pick. And I said, sexism is just ridiculous. So that being said, in the end, we see what happened, and perhaps I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen consider the character and the demeanor of the applicants when going forward tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who should be heard?
We do have one gentleman on Zoom, Mr. Higgins.
Hi, Patrick.
Good evening, me. First of all...
Patrick, you muted yourself again. There we go.
How's that, huh?
How'd it?
Mr. Chairman, congratulations on your championship.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mellow, congratulations on your election.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to make Peter's job easier, and I should have done it for the other gentleman whose name I... is Lenny Hall. I should have done it for you. At the beginning of the meeting, you always indicate that the Zoom information is meeting number, passcode, et cetera. I can tell you that you don't have to use that anymore because people who are not watching, people who are watching already have the information, and anybody who's not at the meeting can't hear the information you've given them to be able to log on to watch the meeting. So that's really an exercise in futurity. It's posted on the agenda and perfectly legal. As far as this appointment to the Commission on Disability, I had no knowledge of any of this. Since it's not on the agenda tonight, it could be argued that you don't have the jurisdiction to appoint the other two applicants. But since Peter Karen had no idea this was coming up 48 hours in advance, he couldn't put it on the agenda whether or not to appoint or not appoint. So it's perfectly legal if Mr. Hall or Miss Mellow want to make an appointment, make an agenda, I'm sorry, if they want to make a motion to expand Council on Disability by two more members and appoint the other two ladies. It's perfectly legal. It's not a violation of the open meeting law. And I would recommend, based on what I've heard tonight, that I would appoint you at the last meeting, even though, because the more volunteers you can get, don't turn down a volunteer. But don't, Peter, you know my father. My father told me a long time ago, if you're out to eat with somebody and they want to be a big shot, and they say, I got the check, put your money back in your pocket and say, thank you. Here, you've got four people who want to pay for the check. They want to volunteer. They want to work for the town. And Disability Commission, as you know, Mike, and as you know, Peter, is very near and dear to my heart. And, you know, ADA is one of my strong points of the meeting laws by second. But if you've got two extra volunteers who want to be on the Commission for Disability, and they both have disabilities, let them on. Don't turn down a volunteer. If somebody wants to volunteer for a park board, and you've got a seven-member board and you want to be number eight, you know, make them an option. But don't turn down a volunteer because once you say no, it's kind of hard for them to say, well, why should I bother applying before that? I'm not, they're not going to give me a fair shot. And the other thing I'll say on the same topic that happens sometimes at times, Chapter 41, Section 11 says when an elected official resigns and you have to have the joint meeting for the appointment. My recommendation is that you entertain nominations and then vote by name. Not, I make a motion to make Pat Higgins the Recreation Commissioner. No, I make a motion to, I will entertain a vote on the nominees. You know, Peter Karen, I vote for Higgins. Mellow, I vote for Mullen. Lenny Hall, I vote for Mullen. I, you know, the other two members may vote for Mike Mullin. You know, at least I feel like I got a fair shot because my name, at least I got into the voting process. Now, I make a motion to point to Mike Mullin of second, a lone favorite, Wolf Hall. Yes, 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 yes. You know, at least when you have more than one applicant for a position, put the names in of the people that you feel that you want to vote for, and then make the appointment as a, as a roll call, vote by name. So the volunteer who has applied for the job feels like they had a scotch. You know, just coming in saying, I make a motion to make Joe Schmo and Larry, the next, you know, donut makers, give them a shot. That's my opinion. As you know, there's a couple of... Now, I have a real concern about this meeting of the Commission on Disability applicants. It's been stated three or four times tonight that Mr. Hall and Miss Mellow both attended, and they both participated in the interview process. It should have been posted as a joint meeting. You had a quorum of the Board of Selectmen participating with the Commission on Disability. That is technically an open meeting law complaint, but as a courtesy to my classmate and the new member, I'm going to look the other way. I'm not going to file an open meeting law complaint. But just remember, if you've got a quorum, and you, you know, I understand, you know, you get into saying, well, what do you, what do you think about this? You're violating the open meeting law. So just, you know, I'm not saying don't go, but if you, if you got, it's easy to just post a joint meeting, and if only two members of the Board of Selectmen show up, at least you covered it. That's, that's my feedback for today from No Court Alabama, and y'all have a great night.
Mr. Higgins, I have a question for you. Just to point...
Yes, Mr. Hall.
Clarification. In regards to the open meeting law, if one member attends but does not participate actively, is his presence considered participating?
Only if you have a quorum because the deliberation that you're, in this situation, you have an appointment that you're going to make. Yes, you can attend the meeting and not participate, but as soon as Nicole shows up, now you have a quorum, and the deliberation is going on during the interviews by the Commission on Disability, of which you are made aware of. You're not actively participating. When you're there, the deliberations are taking place, and that would be an open meeting law violation.
But what would be the difference between me being there physically and me watching it on Zoom or watching it later on?
Your attendance is noted in the minutes. But, but the chairman said that you and Nicole both asked questions and both actively interviewed.
No, I didn't, but...
Well, that's what I heard the chairman and the other lady say, that, you know, Mr. Hall and Mrs. Mellow both participated within the interviews. I might not have heard, and I'll go back and listen to the tape, because I'm not going to issue it anyway.
Thank you.
Just caution to that, if there's a quorum there, one of you should probably leave and go watch it on Zoom or just post it as a meeting. You know, it doesn't cost anything to post it as a joint meeting, and then only one shows up, and you don't have, you don't have a joint meeting. But, you know, caution is always... Putting, putting an agenda out as a joint meeting and not having one is not a, there's no punishment for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
No, thank you, Patrick.
Hey, Robert Woods there? Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear me.
There's a lot of feedback, Woody.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hold up, anybody?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Peter?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to clarify a couple of things. Back years ago, when Patrick Mendez was on the Board of Selectmen, he made every single person come before the Board of Selectmen, whether it was a position for a committee or another board. So, you know, Jonathan was saying he's never seen that, you know, happen before. I'm sure Karen was on the board then when Patrick was on. He would not appoint anyone unless that person was present. You know, the Board of Selectmen is the ultimate appointing authority, and it's up to the chairman's discretion how he runs a meeting. That policy is fine. It depends who the chairman is and how they want to conduct the meeting. That's about all I really wanted to say. I mean, it has been done. It can be done again. It depends who's running the meeting. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Woody. Anybody else? Nobody else on line? Okay, let's move on to town administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to come up to the podium, if that's okay. So... We have, we have, as you know, and hopefully by now all the residents of our town knows, we have our annual town meeting, actually in less than two weeks now, on Monday, June 5th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the D.R. auditorium. And since, over the last two years that I've been working for the town, like, we've established a tradition or a practice where we give an overview, like, of all the, of all the warrant articles, like, in the general, an overview of the general operating budget that are included in the warrant. We provide an overview of, you know, the warrant and what is actually being proposed in the warrant in advance of any of the annual special town meeting. So, so that being said, like, at the June 5th annual town meeting, we have a 25, a 27 article annual town meeting warrant that includes the town's fiscal year proposed $25.3 million operating budget. This represents a 5% overall increase from a fiscal year 2023 appropriations. The proposed FY '24 town operating budget that, that has been proposed and reviewed by both the Board and the Finkcom over the last three months is a fiscally responsible, structurally balanced budget with a projected excess levy capacity of approximately $100,000. Like, as we know, efforts to plan for the next fiscal year have centered upon conservative, zero-based justified budgeting as we adapt to a host of fiscal challenges that have been shaped by outside factors. We do have, in the 27 article warrant, we do have annual warrant, we do have various warrant articles that reflect the priorities of, like, of capital outlay that have also been accompanied by respective funding recommendations from the Board and Finkcom. Of note, Article 14, which is one of the two proposed articles to fund the necessary building improvements for the Dyton Public Library at Smith Memorial Hall, has been, has also been recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Like, in the remaining, and the remaining proposed annual town meeting warrant articles include proposals to fund elementary and middle, elementary and middle school security improvements. They include funding for Main Street roadway reconstruction efforts. They include funding for public safety equipments, and also funding for forest tales litigation and related claims. Like, in the overview, like, in that town meeting, there are typically in the warrant, there was a tendency to use a lot of broadly, oh, you know, like innocuous, oh, yeah, broadly innocuous language that, like, actually, and actually, like, a lot of these words, a lot of the definitions that are used in, in the warrant, they do have, they do have, they do have significant and important meaning. So when we talk about available funds, when we talk about excess levy capacity, when we talk about fiscal year free cash, and in the definition of raising appropriately, all, each of those in other terms have, are very important meanings. So like, in this overview, like, which we'll post so on social media, like, on the town website, like, we wanted to bring everyone up to speed so, like, we all know what these words mean. So, so, yes, when they're seen, so in the warrant and when they're heard at the annual town meeting, like, we're all on the same page, like, and we can operate, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, but, yeah, with a uniform understanding of what these words mean. And just of note as well, like, when we talk, when we talk about free cash, like, right now, we're operating based on the town's, the town's free cash, the town's free cash certification from last October, like, of which, after the special town meeting, like, in which we made, we made deposits to our stabilization accounts and to our capital, and to our capital stabilization accounts of over $1 million. We do have remaining balance going in to the annual town meeting of just over half a million dollars at $514,000. So, like, when we get into the warrant, we do, we do have a few perfunctory warrant articles that are typical in every, that are typical in every, in every warrant. So one of those is Article 1, to hear reports and update some town officials. Then we have Article 2, like, which, which is an article that, which is a... Which is an article that would allow the Board to appoint our necessary town officials. So, like, oh, yeah, like, like, in boarding committee members throughout the fiscal year. Then we get to Article 3. We, we have the payment of a few FY '22 unpaid bills. I can, that totaled the amount of $14,493, $14,493, which are being recommended to fund with a transfer from available free cash. Like, in Article 4, we have, we, we have a statutorily required, statutorily required article to set the salaries for elected town officials. There's a typo there. It should be FY '24. I can all, I can all note the salaries and stipends for town officials proposed for FY '24 include a 2% increase in stipend or salaries from FY '23 appropriations. Like, when we get into, and I'll zoom in a little bit, Article 5 is the FY '24 proposed operating budget. And, yeah, like, in FY, like, FY '24 expenditures are proposed to increase by $1.1 million over FY '23 levels. Like, and those are driven by cost increases, most actually outside of the town's control. Like, in our proposed education budget, we have proposed increases of nine, of $907,000 with capital assessments. That includes, that includes our capital assessments. This includes $149,000 in debt service for the new AGI debt service, like, for the AGI, for the AGI school building project. And also includes the, and also includes the first year of funding the BP project within our levy to the tune of $254,000. So as I mentioned, of the net, like, one, just over a million dollar increase in year-to-year available revenues. 85% of those new revenues would be, would be dedicated to meeting, like, education costs. Like, in, like, in education, like, an educational capital debt assessment increases, and that is very, very significant, and that really points to a sustainability issue going forward, like, into FY '25 and beyond. We also have a $150,000 increase in our Bristol County Retirement System Assessment. That is a requirement based on the state-approved formula. We have, we have a $13,000 increase in trash recycling pickup. This is on top of a $113,000 increase that we realized from FY '22 going into FY '23. Like, we also have a $13,000, like, a $13,000 increase in our general operating budget to fund cyber insurance, which is extremely important based on the, so, yeah, the daily events of the world at this point. Like, and we've only had, and we've only had cyber insurance at this point for the last year and a half. We, the proposed operating budget includes $20,000 as part of, as part of a, as part of a proposed restructuring of the Board of Health and Health Department Office with the hiring of a department head. We have a $20,000 increase in health insurance, a $20,000, $20,000 increase in health insurance costs. Like, and we have a fuel and energy cost increases as well. So that, and, yeah, like, is a very high level, a very high-level general overview of our $25.3 million... of our $25.3 million operating budget. Article 6 is a routine article that, that would fund, that, that would fund the sewer enterprise fund and allow, I can allow the sewer enterprise fund to be drawn from in FY 24. Article 7, like, Article 7, I actually propose, I propose, I proposes, I proposes an amendment to the general bylaws to establish our four new revolving funds. The first would, the first would be, I'm just trying to structure this in a way that I can use this most. Just bear with me, I'm sorry. The, the first, the first new revolving fund that would be established is a police department detail cruiser usage fund. Then, then we have a police, then we have a police department firearms training range outside usage fund. We would, we would, we would also establish a police department, youth and community policing engagement fund. Like in the Parks and Rec are proposing to establish a revolving fund as well. And we, and we, and, and we have recommendations on that at that time, like at this time. Jeez, okay. When we get to, and when we get to Articles 9 and 10, these two, these two articles are important, especially, especially with the Main Street roadway improvements, like in the Pleasant Street Bridge projects that, that we expect to be upcoming. And that, like in Articles 9 and 10, would allow the town to make, to make changes in grade, take land by eminent domain. Like, to settle damages related to any roadway capital improvements in the next fiscal year. Also allow us to deal with easements and address easement issues when we deal with those that capital projects as well. Article, like 11 proposes to apply a cost of living, a cost of, a cost of living allowance to tax exemptions, like including for veterans, widows and residents who, like who are utterly blind. Like in the state, has, has already set, has already set an FY 24 increase of about 6.5% going into next year. That is, that is Article 11. Article, Article 12 is an article that's been recommended by, uh, uh, by Department of Revenue officials and the town accountant to close, to close out deficits accounts that have been carried on the town balance sheet since fiscal year 20, 21, basically since calendar year 2020. So, so for essentially the last three years now. These balances have been negative, have been negatively impacting the town's, the town's free cash certification and available levy for the entirety of FY 22 and FY 23. So, still actually like a dress, so actually addressing these issues. So, yeah, like in taking away these liabilities from our balance sheet before the end of, oh, yeah, like FY 23 would be, and would put us in a much stronger position. As we close out, as we close out FY 23 with free cash and also set the tax rate for FY 24 as well. Article 13, Article 13 is a routine warrant artic, like is a routine warrant article that's required by our Section 6 of Chapter, Chapter 44B of the Massachusetts General Laws and the Towns Bylaws to establish what, to establish what the town's CPC revenues are projected for like in FY 24. We also, in our, in Articles 14 and 15, these are the proposed warrant articles that, that, that would fund the, uh, but the approximately $730,000 improvements to Smith Memorial Hall. Like we do, yeah, like as we know, like when we went, when we went to the June 20, um, 2020, so when we went, so when we went to and proposed the acquisition of the 207 Main Street property, I got, I got the June 6th. So like annual, like in your town meeting last year, we projected that, that total initial cost, including acquisition. So, yeah, like in building improvements, are expected to cost approximately $2 million. Like, whereas the cost associated with the purchase, oh, yeah, like a Smith Memorial Hall would be significantly less than the previous, than the previously proposed, like, uh, big million dollars addition. So, like in, so like, so like of that, I can, so of that in Article 14, I call of approximately the seven, the $730,000 being requested, 323,000 that would be funded from, 323,000 would be funded from the CPC. So like, whereas of the remaining approximately 404, of the remaining, like approximately $404,000 would be funded by a transfer within the current year FY 23 budget. Like we have a whole breakdown. So, yeah, like of the budget, the cost that we whittled down and went through and reviewed, like and we backed out, like in, I can have already identified about $50,000 in savings on top of, oh, yeah, like in, oh, yeah, like on top of various greens that we've, like, actually like applied for and secured as well. So that is an overview of, a very high, a very high level overview of Articles 14 and 15. We have, we, we have Article, we have Article 16 that would fund about $106,000 for the second year payment. But, we, like, of like a seven year, of a seven year new fire engine lease purchase. And this, this was actually initially approved by the town at the, at the June 2021 annual town meeting. We didn't, we didn't actually have to make a payment like, yeah, like in FY 23 due to production timeline issues. But, yeah, like at the beginning, oh, yeah, like at the beginning of July, we do have, and, yeah, like based on us actually almost ready to receive the engine, we need to make the second payment. So that's Article 16. I can, I, I can, I'm in Article 7, in Article 17 from the ambulance fund. We had $122,000 approved by, by the June 20, 2022 annual town meeting. Sent, like actually, like actually between the time the cost estimate was secured to when we went to contracting, like after town, like after town meeting last year, the cost, the cost for the new ambulance increased by $23,000. So this would like, so yes, so this would increase the year, the year one payment to approximately $145,000. Like in this would not, like have any impact, this would not have any impact on the tax rate. This would also be funded through the ambulance fund, through dedicated revenues. Like in Article 18, we have a proposed $50,000 payment for a fourth of, like, for like a, for the fourth of a five-year lease to purchase. A contractor agreement, so, 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 yeah, like after this year, we own, we only have one more year like of making like a $50,000 payment, like in that amount, like and then we'll like finally own the, the street sweeper outright. So that will be really helpful. I can, I can, I'm in Article, I'm in Article of 19, we're proposing actually $50,000 to fund planning board legal costs. We do, like in the planning board, oh, like over, like over the last few months, I like, I like, I like, I actually has a need, I like actually has a need to protect and defend the town's interests in a number of legal matters, including an appeal relative to the, to the proposed Forest Hills Development that could possibly extend beyond the next fiscal year as well. So that's why, um, that is what, uh, uh, that is why we're proposing funding in an article rather than the town's operating budget at this point. In Article 20, I'm just gonna like zoom in because, because Article 20 is another important article. Oh, but yeah, I can thank, I can thankfully, there were only 20, there were only 27 articles, so I'm almost done. Like I know that's important to everyone. But, like we, um, we, we have a proposed $300,000 in initial funding, like an initial funding for the Main Street roadway reconstruction project. Yeah, like along with the Dyton Water District's Main Street, along with the Water District's Main Street replacement efforts, like we, we do have planned Main Street, we do have, we do have planned Main Street infrastructure improvement projects that include the replacement of utility poles and drainage improvements, like as well as sidewalk upgrades and roadway reconstructions as well. The drainage improvements inside, the drainage improvement sidewalk upgrades and roadway reconstruction components are, 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 but currently projected to cost approximately 2.1 million. Like, yeah, like in a being planned as a multi-year phase project during the next two to three years. But Dyton will be leveraging various funding streams, including, like, including state, well, like including state chapter 90, like an American Rescue Plan Act funding to help actually like subsidize these costs. And, yeah, like, and, 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 and in the coming weeks, for example, yeah, like we, uh, uh, we do plan to make a $250,000 APF funding request to have the Bristol County Commissioners to fund the necessary Main Street, but drainage, drainage and stormwater. So, so, yeah, like improve, yeah, like improvements for the project. Oh, yeah, and the $300,000 would be an, the $300,000 would be an initial town investment in the project that would provide us with the opportunity to establish a work plan leveraging all available funds. But like in this investment, so this investment would also represent towns, the towns are first up in implementing the recommendations from our recently done pavement management plan as well. And Article 21, we, we have $20,000 for a proposed alternative analysis report for the closed Brig Street Bridge. So as we know, like as most of us know, Brig Street Bridge has been, has been closed to vehicular traffic by MassDOT since 1995. The, the $28,000 in proposed, I can propose funding for an alternative analysis includes a review of the various alternatives for the disposition of the bridge. And, and, and us, and us, and us, so, 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 yeah, the $28,000 assessment here would, uh, uh, would fund an analysis to, the 20, the $28,000 would fund an analysis that, would analyze whether like, whether it would be best to remove the bridge with the, oh, yeah, like with appropriate public safety measures. And, and, yeah, like whether we have any opportunity or ability to rehab, oh, yeah, like any parts of the bridge, oh, yeah, like what, oh, 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 like we'll have any, and, yeah, like we'll, we'll have any opportunity to replace the bridge as well, and that would give us a recommend. And, yeah, so the $28,000 would do an assessment. So like in an engineering analysis to provide a recommendation on that. Article 22 would be, uh, like, uh, uh, like Article 22 proposes, proposes $34,000 that would also be funded by the ambulance fund, which would fund the perf, which, which would fund the purchase of, which would fund the purchase of two, like of two CPR chest compression systems for Dyton Fire Rescue. And we do, uh, we do have, we do have a current equipment that is now outdated. And, and that the price includes approximately $5,000 in trading costs for the outdated equipment that we would be trading in to get the new equipment. Like we, like we, like we, like we, we have $100,000 in proposed our security technology and access control funding that, that, that would be funded with part of the excess, all part of the excess and deficiency offset that, but that we are receiving back from D.R. in the current year's budget. And, and, yeah, one of the things, like both, uh, both Dyton Elementary and Dyton Middle, they don't have any, uh, they, they, they don't, they don't have any video technology. Oh, yeah, like what do they have, so like any like access controls like in each of the buildings, like and if they had any of this technology, like actually back in January, when they believe the rooms or the areas on the second floor, like if DMS were vandalized, they, oh, yeah, like having this audio in place probably would have prevented or addressed that. But, yeah, so that's one of the things in the commitment to public safety that the school so actually has, like an investment that they're asking us to help make. Like if they, uh, yeah, like and they vast the same thing of a Holbert as well. Like, after a Holbert Annual Town Meeting on the 9th, they also approved this funding. Like, 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 Article 24, like, like, Article 20, Article 24 proposes $60,000 to be funded like from, from the dedicated revenues in the PEG Access Account to, to, to find out, to, to find a cable studio in Old Town, like in Old Town, in Old Town Hall Technology upgrades. Like, in the studio, like it would fund, it would fund upgrades to the server, cable workstation. Oh, yeah, like into like various other efforts in the Channel 9 studio. So like in here, what we envisioned, like is actually taking away all these pods and wires and having some 2023, like actually, so, yeah, like way more audio friendly and professional system here. And, and, and that we would move the system that, uh, we have here to the community room at DPD as well. Like in, like in Article 25, um, 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 there were two very minor technical amendments that are being proposed, that are being proposed to the D.R. regional agreement. The first would, like update the list of, like, Uh, the first would, uh, like update the list of like the whole of school properties. Uh, in the second proposes to update, to update the annual budget process timeline. Uh, 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 basically for the operating capital budget to be presented. Uh, uh, yeah, like and this would change from January fifteenth of each year to March first. And then, uh, uh, yeah, like, uh, uh, yeah, like and then, uh, uh, and then Article, um, Article twenty-six includes like a, uh, 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 but like, uh, but like includes a resident petition and we never get involved. So, yeah, like, so, yeah, like, well, I never get involved, like in trying to explain, and I yell, and I yell like something that was actually, uh, so, yeah, and I yell, like proposed by residents, so, um, and Article, um, and Article twenty-seven, then it will be time to adjourn. And hopefully at that point, the time is only around nine, nine or five, and we can all call it a night. So, yeah, so that was long-winded, but are there any questions, like as I mentioned, this will be up online on our social media, like so we can get this out to everybody in advance, so.
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Can I ask one question about one of the articles?
Yeah.
On Article twenty-four, isn't there a pretty aggressive, um, grant rating process going on right now in the district for that as well?
Um, you mean Article twenty-five for the security enhancement? Uh, yes, so there, yeah, like that, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, yeah, they're trying to leverage local funding together with grant funding as well.
Alright, so there'll be, that's gonna kind of help with a matching fund for any grants that they may receive?
Yes, exactly, yeah, like it's all hand in hand. Any other questions? Okay, and, uh, and I appreciate, like, sorry for my long windedness.
It's okay.
Um, it's time for the selectmen's reports, and I guess I'll go first with the solid waste we met yesterday. And, um, we obviously completed the, uh, the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. And the transfer station is being sent to the highway department, I think you both knew that. It's gonna be run by the highway department now. Um, we had an update on the point of sale, which is about three weeks behind, but we thought it would be in about three weeks ago, right?
Yeah, like we ordered that, uh, we ordered the, uh, the technology and equipment about, uh, like actually going on, uh, four to five weeks ago. At this point, we thought it would be in by three weeks ago, so, so we've been following up with the vendor, but we do, um, I hope plan to expect to have everything operational by the beginning of the fiscal year.
Right, um, with that will come the, um, unit and, uh, and training. Obviously, bulky week is this week, which ends on Friday, so if you haven't got your pickup slips, it might be too late. Um, and the solid waste mailings that we have are going to go as part of the warrant package. So, uh, there's about three pages that we paid for as part of a bulk, but are not being used, so we're gonna print it into the town warrant. So that everybody will have access to, uh, the, the solid waste breakdown. That's it, Lenny, you got something?
I noticed that Nicole has an update on the library building committee.
Yes, so, yes, so just real quick, um, on five thirteen, we had the open house. Um, I believe it was about seventy residents attended. Um, it went extremely smooth, um, they only put that together within a week, um, they did a great job. Um, they could only bring in ten residents at a time. Um, I was concerned that we were gonna leave people out in the, I'm not gonna say the cold, because it was very hot out. Um, but somehow the numbers ended up that everyone got in, there was no issues, um, and it went well.
Thank you.
Um, I have actually three reports. It was a very busy week. Uh, the Water District, the Water District Annual Meeting will be tomorrow at six thirty PM at the Dyton Middle School. Uh, in the last election, Jeff Clunin was elected as the new Water Commissioner for the District. Uh, Jeff defeated Jason Quinn by twenty-five votes. We would like to thank Mr. Quinn for his service to the Water District. Water District Chairman Derek Latch resigned from the Commission following the election. There is now a vacancy on the Commission, and the Commission will appoint someone until the next election. Anyone interested in serving as an interim commissioner should send a letter of intent to the Water District Board of Commissioners Office at one ninety-two Williams Street, and an interview will be set up. Uh, there will be a water restriction in the Dyton Water District from May first to October thirtieth. Odd number, nonessential outdoor water use is permitted only on the days and hours specified. Odd numbered addresses, um, will be permitted on Monday and Thursday from five AM to eight AM. Even numbered addresses will be permitted on Tuesday and Friday from five AM to eight AM. And no new irrigation system permits will be issued at this time. The Walker Street Well Number Two is back online just in time as our water use traditionally increases. Regarding the Main Street project, poles are being moved by Esplandi and National Grid. Both the phone company and cable company need to complete their work before the old poles will be remu- removed. Also, beginning in July, beginning in July, three mains and culverts will be repaired, resulting in traffic delays. Alternate travel routes are highly recommended during this period of work. The Commission is negotiating with NARTN Construction about some type of road restoration on Main Street to be done in the fall. Either a smooth top coat or milling of the road. The Commission is very much aware of the travel conditions on Main Street, as they've received a number of complaints. Next, um, Monday night, the Dyton Development and Industrial Commission met. There were several very positive bits of news to come out of this meeting. Four new businesses have recently opened in the town. E and L Gym on Williams Street, Saint Nick's Trailer Service, Simply Printable, and Haney Hardworking and Carpentry. And on Saturday, One Connection Cannabis Dispensary presented the town a check for thirty-five thousand dollars to be used for public safety. This money is in lieu of taxes and is part of their agreement with the town. One Connection celebrated their one-year anniversary on Saturday. Also, the Second Annual Business Network Event will be October third, twenty twenty-three, beginning at five PM at the Bristol County Agricultural School. Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce and DDIC are sponsoring this event. The next meeting of the DDIC will be June twenty-sixth at six PM at Old Town Hall. And lastly, Dyton Hope with Regional School Committee met last night, and unfortunately, some of the news I have to report is not good. The principal of Dyton Middle School has resigned. Mr. Wheeler, who was the principal before retiring, will be returning to lead the school for the remainder of the school year. Over at the high school, Mrs. Dicheko also submitted her resignation as principal. Like the middle school position, both will be posted and filled during the summer. On a more positive note, the First Annual Civics Expo will be held at the high school tomorrow at noon. Students will be showcasing civic projects, some of which include work on climate, environment, and social service type activities. Thank you.
Thank you, quite the report. Why did the principals resign?
Those are personnel matters, and they are between the,
Sure.
Select, I mean, the superintendent and the individual.
Great, thank you. Uh, so another reason why everybody is here, old business, and the first one is A, to review, discuss, and act recommendation to appoint Leah Quinn to the Commission on Disability. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for your comments, uh, they were well received and appreciated. I for one see no harm in asking a, a resident who wants to be appointed that I don't know to come here. Uh, I, I really don't care what would happen, happened in the past, what other chairman did, or what are the boards of selectmen are. I'm not going to appoint somebody I don't know, it's that, it's that simple. As it is, I made the mistake of appointing Chris Andre, because it wasn't even the Chris Andre that I thought I was appointing. So, um, I, I wouldn't have appointed him either, and to assume that it's a sexist thing, you are not wrong. And, and I, I, uh, I'm offended that you thought that that was the case. Take it from somebody who broke with six sisters, who used to beat me up when I came home from school, uh, it would never would have been allowed, uh, not here in the town of Dyton, and not me personally. I won't be pressured into voting, not voting for somebody that, um, wants to be appointed. But by the same token, I'm not going bullied by appointing somebody who thinks they should be appointed. Uh, the last person you want, the last group you want to, um, offend is this very same group that's going to appoint you. And I, I, again, take offense to that, uh, just because I simply did not know these two, and I was, we were trashed on the internet, uh, in, in other ways. My feeling is, is if this is the way it's going to happen every time we don't agree with somebody, I don't want any part of that. Um, it, I'm one of three votes, but I would recommend that we not appoint either one of them. Um, for the simple reason one is, a half hour before the meeting started, we got notification that they weren't going to be here. How seriously do they want to be appointed if they couldn't at least show up, uh, just to be at least seen? Uh, I don't know what, what happened, uh, I hope they are, they are safe, but, uh, to me, it's being just a little bit more disrespectful, uh, than, than what was posted on the internet. So it's gonna be up to my two colleagues if somebody wants to recommend them, and somebody wants to second it, but I would not be appointing in the affirmative. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my intent in recommending the expansion of the Council on Disability was based on a desire to make volunteers feel welcome. And to bring together a cross-section of the community. However, what took place on social media the week following our meeting to table by one of the candidates is totally unacceptable. And has caused me to change my opinion on this matter. The vile attack directed by one of the candidates against the chairman of the Board of Selectmen will not be tolerated. Mr. Karen was the former CEO of a Fortune five hundred company, Marriott International. And both he and that company are recognized and respected worldwide. The COD has functioned with five members for quite some time. And I am going to motion, make a motion that we close this appointment process with the current group of five COD members.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Um, now to new business, review, discuss act, announcement of a memorandum, memorandum of agreement with Dispatches slash Communications Union.
Uh, yes, so this is relatively straightforward, Mr. Chairman, um, on an executive session, the board did approve, uh, the MOU, uh, with, with the dispatchers. Uh, like it's a one-year extension of their current contract, uh, with a two percent increase, uh, like in salary, uh, like actually like hourly wage, uh, for FY twenty-four. So I recommend that the board, uh, like, uh, vote to ratify it in open session this evening.
Okay. Any discussion, guys?
No.
Is there a motion on the floor?
What are we motioning, sorry?
The, the Dispatches Communication Union. So moved, so moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Review, discuss act, memorandum of understanding between Town of Dyton and Sprey, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. Uh, this is the regional energy, uh, planning assistance.
Uh, yeah, so Serpeth is act, uh, like is actually the grant administrator, um, that we have had since we began, since we began receiving the Green Act Communities Grant. Um, I believe in twenty nineteen, and, uh, they, uh, they actually do a very good job for us, it's a pleasure to work for them. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, with them, like on this, and, um, so, uh, yeah, so this is like an annual, and, yeah, like it's like an annual agreement that we present to the board at this point every year, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, guys?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Dyton and Serpeth, Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District's Regional Energy Planning Assistance Program.
I'll second that.
I apologize for calling you Sprey. Is there, uh, you got the motion, you got the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye, thank you. Review, update, and update, Town of Dyton Policy Proceedings in Board of, in Committee Handbook, this is a re- review to discuss an act.
And, uh, and, uh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like if I may, Mr. Chairman, are you, are you miss, I don't see?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Um, review, discuss act, facilities requests, new leaf energy, committee meeting to introduce battery energy storage project.
Yes. Sorry. And, and, and so like, yes, so like, so like as a request form, as a request form mentioned, I, uh, my new leaf energy is seeking to rent, um, Old Town Hall on, uh, like, uh, on the tenth, on the tenth of July, uh, like from six thirty to eight PM. Uh, they do, uh, the entity does have a proposed battery energy, uh, storage project. Uh, which we have a reason to believe like at this point that they'll be applying for, uh, like, uh, 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 yeah, like in the not-too-distant future. Um, and, um, the, um, and, yeah, uh, yeah, and they wanna, uh, uh, yeah, like, and they wanna have a, uh, they wanna have a community meeting to, so like introduce the project, what it is, what it will be, the project, I believe. So, uh, it's going to be proposed to be located up on Main and Lane. And, um, and it will be a fairly extensive process. Uh, yeah, like if an application is actually submitted, uh, like it, uh, it will involve many, many Dyton town departments. Um, but, uh, but there'll also be a significant piece that will act, uh, like will actually go to the state EFSB, the state like Energy Facility Studying Board. And like it is like a very extensive process, so I, and, uh, yeah, like we'll get the word out, like if, uh, yeah, like, and, uh, yeah, like if the reservation like request is approved by the board. Uh, but, yeah, like we wanna make sure the whole, oh, yeah, like our whole town and community is aware and, yeah, like and has an ability really, oh, yeah, like really to learn about this proposal.
Do you think this building's gonna be large enough?
Uh, like I have asked, I have asked that question of for that exact reason. Um, the, uh, the building, uh, the building does have the capacity to hold like over eighty people. Um, and to tell like, so like I, so like I did have a, I did have that question, I asked that question to the building commissioner. He thought Old Town Hall was appropriate. Um, uh, yeah, but like I do have that open question, because of some of those things you never do know.
There could be ten, there could be two hundred.
Exactly, so, um, and, yeah, like what I would recom, uh, what I would recommend, even though like I, I, I won't have any role in it, but to, uh, to the applicant, that if there is that interest, maybe they do a follow-up. Oh, yeah, like, yeah, like if that is, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like if the meeting does attract that large of a, uh, you know, of an audience.
Okay.
I know in Taunton, they have a policy in regards to the use of public buildings and attendance.
Yes.
When it reaches a certain level, a police officer is required, or a fire person is required to be present. Does Dyton have that?
Uh, yes, and that's why we have the, the capacity of around eighty, because anything over eighty would actually trigger a public safety issue in terms of capacity in the building. Uh, yes, so like anything over eighty, we can't have anything in here at all. And, uh, yeah, and- And, yeah, and, but anything under than around 80, I want to say it's 80 or 88. Oh, yeah, we, oh, yeah, we, oh, oh, we, so we, we have here the ability to host without any issue. Like, it's only if we exceed that, then we have to either, like, shut the event down, like, or we have to ask people to leave, or however that goes.
Okay. That would be interesting. Any other comments?
No, no.
I will make a motion to approve the facilities request of new leave energy for their community meeting to introduce battery, battery energy storage projects on July 10th, 2023, starting at 6:30 PM and ending at 8:00 PM.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, guys. Review, Discuss Act, Review and Update Town of Dyton Policy Procedures in Board and Committee Handbook.
So, we have talked a lot in the last few weeks, but also in the last year, more than last year, like, actually about the policies that we have in place, whether the, whether the board policies, the town policies that we have in place are effective, that are working, like, whether they need to be tweaked, like, after, like, after being in use, like, and implemented, oh, yeah, in some cases, more than five years ago, like, in some cases, more than three years ago, and in some cases, oh, yeah, like, over a year. Like, I think it's healthy that, oh, like, as part of the, as part of the growing and evolving that we're doing, that we do take a look at the policies we have on a regular basis. Oh, yeah, to identify what is working, what isn't working, so we don't always have to confront the old adage that we do this just because we've always done it. Like, if we have a policy that we might have a need, like, or prompted to address, like, I think, like, at this point with, oh, yeah, and, yeah, and, yeah, and, yeah, and, yeah, the experience we've built together, we have a pretty good grasp of the policies that work, oh, yeah, the policies that might actually need more work, oh, like, what policies might actually be, oh, yeah, like, really, maybe overkill, like, and not really an effective policy. So, what, like, I am just recommending that, like, we start, like, as a process, so, so like, so, so over the summer, maybe we start to actually, so, yeah, so, yeah, to go through policies. Oh, yeah, like, and to, like, schedule, like, a few for the next, oh, yeah, like, six, seven meetings, so we can review them together. Oh, yeah, like, if there are policies that, oh, yeah, like, and, yeah, like, that the board wants to move in a direction where there are men, we can do that, but we can, like, begin, so, yeah, like, a cyclical process, if you will, to really start, yeah, like, as I mentioned, making sure the policies that we have are working and, like, are effective in 2023.
That makes sense. How long ago was that written?
Huh? Sorry.
How long ago was that policy written?
The, the, um, the policies that we have in place, as I mentioned, like, some were written, oh, five, six years ago, or some were written three. When we talk about the, the guidelines that were included, that are included in the Board and Committee Handbook, I believe the Board and Committee Handbook was finalized in late 2020, so that would be almost three years old. The policy that we have in, like, our policy handbook that actually, that actually took effect on February 26th of 2020, so that's more than three years old. And as I mentioned, we have other policies in our policy handbook that go back to 2017. And we have other policies in our policy handbook that, in my opinion, aren't really policies at all. So, and, like, I think everything is, like, oh, you know, really to have a fresh look at.
Any questions, guys? Go ahead.
Yes. I'm not sure if Mr. Karen and Ms. Mello know this, but every year, we have a retreat.
Yes.
Are we going to have one this year?
Yes, it will, um...
Is it appropriate if this be a part of?
I, that's a really good point, yes.
Have it done for them?
Oh, no, like, I think really, like, beginning to dive into it then. Yeah.
Sure.
I, yeah, that's, so, yeah, so, yeah, like, I might, so, typically, we have that retreat the weekend after the 4th of July. I might be a little held up, oh, yeah, dealing with a few-day-old baby at that point, but, oh, yeah.
You can bring the baby.
Yeah.
Some flexibility in scheduling might be appreciated, but, thank you.
Before we continue, I don't know if I made a mistake, because on the old business, we mentioned A, Review, Discuss Act, Recommendation for, to appoint Leah Quinn. We did not mention B. So is that a requirement, or did we take them both together? And I'm not aware.
So I interpreted as that the board took both of them together.
Okay.
Because the motion was, the board remained with five.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I believe for E, Review, Discuss an Act, we're going to table?
Yeah, that is the, the information security policies.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Need a motion to table?
I motion to table the information security policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Mello?
Aye.
Mr. Hull?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. F, Review, Discuss an Act, Appoint Nicole Mello as voting member of the Agricultural Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Nicole Mello as a voting member of the Agricultural Committee.
And I'll step down as chairman and second that motion. All those in favor? Lenny?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Review, Discuss Act, One-Day Liquor License for Bristol County Agricultural High School, 135 Cent, the Street, Dyton, Mass.
I can speak to this if the board doesn't mind.
Sure.
Okay. So, beginning earlier this week, we received an application from Bristol County Agricultural High School for an event that's coming right up, as you can see, it's before your next meeting.
Right.
So we've been gathering all the information with them, and we so far have gathered the application, the maps of where they intend to hold the gathering. We've determined it's going to be about 50 people. We've gotten feedback from the fire department, who has no issues with this. The only thing we have left to gather is liquor liability from the bartending service, which is the England Bartending Service. But I can tell you that we have worked with them a couple of times in the past, and we've had no problems with them. We do have some tip certification from them, but a couple of them need updating at this point. Mr. Costa has let us know that we should have this by Monday of next week. So we're asking the board if they would consider voting contingent upon us receiving that documentation, and then we'll be all set.
What is this event?
I'm not sure what the actual title of it is, but it's taking place at the Standish House, and it's about 50 people.
Is it their fundraiser, or?
I don't believe it's a fundraiser. I want to say I saw a reference to Azores in one of the documents.
Of the Azores?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you confident that we'll get everything right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have no issues with it.
And we won't issue unless we do.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Bristol County Agricultural High School for a function that will be held on June 7th, 2023, on the condition that all of the necessary paperwork is filed and the fee paid.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Mr. Hull?
Aye.
Mrs. Mello?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Review, Discuss Act, Proposed Board of Selectment Meeting Schedule for July 2023 through December 2023. Any concerns? So is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed Board of Selectment Meeting Schedule for July 2023 through December 2023.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Mr. Hull?
Aye.
Mrs. Mello?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. Approval of the warrants.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrants for May 18th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Forty, oh, I have to read, I have to read. 46A-23 for $120,181.21.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
Make a motion to approve the warrants for May 25th, 2023.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Lenny?
Aye.
And Nicole?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Acknowledgement, ALA Grant Award Letter. Should we read it, or is it necessary?
Yeah, like, I do, the Grant Award is a pretty...
Prestigious award.
Yeah, so, like, I do recommend if we can read it into the record.
Absolutely. Dear Jocelyn, congratulations. The American Library Association, ALA, Public Programs Office is pleased to inform you that Dyton Public Library has been selected to receive a Libraries Transforming Communities, LTC, Accessible Small and Rural Communities Grant in the amount of $20,000. This was a very competitive process. We received many excellent proposals. You should be very proud of this accomplishment. Below are a few important steps to get started, and it does list the steps that they have to go through. And basically, it's if you have any questions or concerns, contact Kylie McCarty, and I'll give her address. Question, congratulations again on this successful application. We are very excited about the work you have planned for, your library and community, and look forward to collaborating with you in the days ahead. Best, Samantha Oakley, the Deputy Director.
So, yeah, and I just, if I could have liked, I just wanted to add my thanks and congratulations to the library director, like, and also the ADA coordinator who worked, who worked with the library director on this. What actually Jocelyn and Jonathan did was, like, community support was like a really big factor and component in this grant award. So, and they, and they were very successful in getting, in getting and obtaining feedback and engagement from different departments, like, as part of the grant application, which, I mean, when, yeah, those, those, those are components, not part of every grant application, but when they are, they do add a whole additional layer, oh, you know, really to be able to do and to get everyone engaged and part of the grant writing. And, yeah, and they did that. And, yeah, like, I just want to say thank you to them.
Yeah, definitely. Can we offer a letter of congratulations to both of them?
Yes.
Is there a motion for that?
So, vote.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. That's a great job, guys. Correspondence, a letter from Pamela Tenglin regarding her retirement from position of Assistant Clerk. This is to Mark Lucicco, Town Clerk, 979 Somerset Avenue, Department, Dyton, Mass, 02715, May 17th. Letter of Retirement, Dear Mark, I am writing to inform you that I will be retiring from my position as Assistant Town Clerk effective January 11th, 2023. This was a difficult decision by my health, but my health has made the decision for me. I greatly appreciate 29 years, unbelievable, that I've spent at the Town Hall, and it's been a great pleasure working with you over the last few years. It's also been a pleasure to work alongside the individuals at Town Hall, and I will always appreciate the experience and knowledge I have gained from my time here. Signed, Pamela.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, I would recommend that the board accept the letter, the letter of, like, retirement, yeah, the letter of retirement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the letter of retirement of Pamela Day Tenglin with sincere thanks and appreciation.
Definitely.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Mr. Hull?
Aye.
Mrs. Mello?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful one.
Next is Minutes, Approval of the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes of May 10th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes of May 10th, 2023.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Mr. Hull?
Aye.
Mrs. Mello?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to mention for Patrick Higgins, because, like, I know he's still paying attention, that we are very much within the three-meeting-of-the-30-day rule, Mr. Higgins, so, I just want to let me go and talk a bit.
I'm very appreciative, I'm very aware, and you guys have done a good job on the meeting minutes. Unlike one of your, AKA, Alphax, it's just now been into January of '23. So, you're doing a great job.
We have a great staff. Thank you, sir. We're now going to enter into executive session. We will not be returning from executive, I'm sorry, you have to leave this entertaining night.
I'm sorry you have to leave.
We will not be returning from executive session.
Have a good night.
In Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, To Discuss Strategy With Respect to Collective Bargaining or Litigation If an Open Meeting May Have a Detrimental Effect on the Bargaining or Litigation Position of the Public Body, and the Chair So Declares, and the Chair Does Declare, For Aid Clerical Union, When the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, To Comply With or Act Under the Authority of Any General or Special Law or Federal Grant in Aid Requirements. Then we will approve the executive section minutes if they are approved, and then adjournment. So that ends this evening's show, and we'll see you two weeks.
I gotta get ready, load my phone.
Thank you.
You have to do your roll call vote in session before you go ahead.
Sure, we have to adjourn the executive, I mean, the regular session.
No, no, you have to do, you have to vote on your motion to go on executive.
Motion to vote, okay.
Yes.
Is there a vote?
Mr. Hull is an aye?
Mrs. Mello is an aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, Patrick.